Good evening and welcome to the May 17th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. Kosakian, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item.
Flag salute will be led by Councilmember Sinanian and invocation by Rabbi Asuka Bachman, Shabbat Jewish Center of Glendale. Please rise for the flag salute.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we gather today in prayer as we begin a session of the Glendale City Council. We are mindful that we are citizens of a city that mirrors the rich pluralism and diversity of our country. We are a people who come together out of multiple backgrounds, ethnic, racial, and religious, cultural, and social, with varying interests, occupations, and manners of living. We ask that you continue to bless our community as we seek always to respect one another. Bless us with love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, and gentleness so that we may truly reflect in our lives what we know in our hearts, that we are all brothers and sisters of one another since we are all your children. We ask you, Almighty God, to bless the city council, our mayor, and all members of our government. Endow them with the gifts of vision, patience, perspective, and understanding so that in their collaboration this city might experience a growth and harmony and cooperation. Mighty God, make our city an example of how, in a complex, pluralistic, democratic society, we can stay true to our nation's founding principles and work together to be a beacon of light for humanity. Finally, gracious Lord, we ask that you let the brightness, gentleness, and mercy of your countenance shine upon this wonderful city and all of us who call it our home, the dwelling place of our children and therefore our future, and the place where our aspirations and dreams can be realized. Amen.
Amen.
Next item.
The agenda for the May 17, 2016, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Friday, May 13, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 24, 2016.
Mr. Tectali.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. On May 24, there are no items listed on the Glendale Housing Authority agenda in the afternoon. However, there will be a special City Council meeting in the afternoon at 3:00 P. M. with one report from the Director of Community Development, and that'll be regarding considering adding additional development scenarios in the RFP to preserve and develop the city property located at 2713 Honolulu Avenue, also known as Rock Haven Sanitarium. In the evening City Council meeting, there's a long list of consent items. At 4:00 B. is a report from Director of Public Works regarding approval of the final tract map for a three-unit condominium subdivision at 806 East Chestnut Street. 4:00 C. is a Director of Community Services and Parks regarding request or proposal for elderly nutrition program. 4:00 D. is a Director of Public Works and Community Development regarding dedication of city property at 227 North Brand and 222 South Brand Boulevard. Azapaseo at 4:00 F. is the Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks regarding the Maple Park and Maryland Avenue park shade structures. 4:00 G. is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding a motion to increase Morrison contract for nutritional meals, followed by a report from the Director of Public Works regarding construction quality assurance contracts. There'll be a report from General Manager of GWP regarding amendments to PSA with ACIS power marketing, followed by another report from Director of Library, Arts, and Culture regarding amendment of professional services agreement with Glendale Arts. 4:00 K. will be a report from the City Clerk regarding legal advertising services and directing the City Clerk to advertise for bids, followed by a report from Fire regarding the UASI's 2015 Homeland Security Grant. And the final consent item, it will be a report from the Chief of Police regarding upgrade of the Glendale Police Department's existing voice and data logging recording system. Under action items, there is only two. The first would be a report from Director of Public Works regarding the Proposition 84 Green Street Demonstration Project, and finally, a report from GWP regarding update on water conservation.
Thank you very much. Next item.
3B is a proclamation for Bike to Work Day 2016.
Okay. We have a group. Great. All right. I'll read your proclamation. You may speak. Okay. "Whereas the month of May is National Bike Month and cities across the nation will be hosting events and promoting Bike to Work Day on May 20, 2016. Whereas the Glendale Employee Ride Share Program has been promoting the bicycle as an alternative transportation mode for almost a quarter century to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles, improve the air quality, and to promote good health. Whereas the City of Glendale has made an admirable commitment to enhancing the bicycle through our ride-sharing program, offering free bike rides on our Glendale Beeline, updating the bicycle transportation plan, and installing of bicycle lockers and racks throughout the city. And whereas we are engaged with partners from other local agencies and advocacy groups to list the city as a pit stop location for the Los Angeles County Bike to Work Day and provide information and support to bicyclists who visit the pit stops. Now therefore I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 2016 to be Bike Month in Glendale." And I'm going to let Councilmember Friedman, because I know that she rides her bike to work some. I don't know if she's.
I haven't for a little while, but I used to ride my bike to City Hall every single week.
But I know she's an advocate. Okay. And you've all reminded me and inspired me to start again. So congratulations. Thank you for everything.
Thank you so much.
I'm giving this to.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Ceci Narzumanians. I am the Employee Transportation Coordinator for Urban Design and Mobility. I have with me here Shantimir Zayyan from Urban Design and Mobility, again Celeste Wilson from Building and Safety, Cora Kukoyen from Transit, Erica Kemp from Go Glendale, Kayla and Mike Kaiser from Walk Bike Glendale. And we are here to thank you for the proclamation, for the Bike to Work Month. And we would like to thank you also for allowing us to make a conscious effort in order to create a greener Glendale. And we do this by encouraging people to use different ways of transportation, transportation means, and this will definitely benefit the environment for the better. Biking does help to reduce traffic congestion, and it is very environmentally friendly, as we all know. And Bike to Work Day is actually coming up on May 19. We have three pit stops. One is right across from the City Hall. We're going to be on the sidewalk on Broadway. The other one is on Brand, which is coordinated by Go Glendale, Erica herself. And the other one is in Glendale Community College. And the event starts at 6:00 A. M., goes until 9:00 A. M. And we will be at the pit stop. We will be serving refreshments and drinks. And for anyone who decides to drive their bike to work, and they can come, stop by, have a drink, and then continue on to going to work. And we'd like to announce that all Beeline riders can bike for free on that day if they take their bike or their helmet with them. And the last announcement that I have is for, we are encouraging everybody to go online and fill out a survey for pedestrian safety. The website is glendalewalks.com. And this is a great way for us to know how people feel about the streets they walk on. We want to know. We want genuine, genuine comments from people in order for us to be able to better ourselves and better serve the community. I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Erica. She wants to share a few words with you.
I'll be really, really quick. My name's Erica Kemp. I'm with Go Glendale. We work with a lot of the large employers, multi-tenant office buildings, and now also some of the new residential buildings in downtown Glendale. And I think as a, I'm also a resident of Glendale and someone who rides my bike around a lot, and I'm very happy to report that in the past month, we've had a couple of events for our Go Glendale members. One that was during the day, lunchtime, for kind of people who work in Glendale to come and learn about riding their bike to work, and we had a great turnout. And we also, just a couple of weekends ago, had an event for some of the new residential buildings downtown and showed them how to get to the Americana and to Trader Joe's and things like that. And we also had a lot of interest there as well. So people who live and work in Glendale are definitely interested in riding their bikes. So thank you guys very much for this. And I'm going to pass it to Mike and Kayla from Walk Bike Glendale real quick.
Hi. Thanks for having us. And we also have had some wonderful events this past week for Bike to Work Month, Bike Month. We had these four workshops here sponsored by Metro. We have one remaining workshop, that is this Saturday, May 21. We're going to meet at the Glendale Transportation Center at 10:00 A. M. And we're going to take the Metrolink train to Union Station, then we're going to take the red line out to North Hollywood, then we're going to ride back, and we're going to be featuring some of the wonderful bicycle infrastructure that the city has put in for us. We're hoping to see that Sonora Avenue Green Bike Lane ASAP. Of course, it's not there yet, but as soon as possible would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Lot of activity. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Garpetian has a few words.
No, I just want to thank you for everything you do. But we had another event that Rotary of Glendale hosted, the Nune Roadry hosted last weekend. It was Jewel City Fun and Fitness Day. It was very well attended. It was a fun event, and it was music, there was food, most important one, right? After riding like 35 miles, you need some food. So it was a funny event. I just want to put that out there and thank everyone who organized it, and keep doing what you do.
It's great. Getting more and more interest in biking in Glendale, that's a good thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
3C is appointment of Board and Commission members. This was a nomination by Councilmember Garpetian made on May 10, 2016, of Dr. Eileen McGrann, Commission on the Status of Women.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Before I move the item, Dr. McGrann is here. I'd like to invite her to the podium and ask her to say a few words.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I really appreciate and I'm honored to be in front of you. As you know, I work for Glendale Unified School District as a psychologist and as administrator. This is my fifth year in Glendale. I do reside in Glendale. I've been here for 20 years. I'm really passionate about giving back to my community, being a role model and advocate for especially the young women that are grown up, and be a role model and assist them in their careers. Another thing is social-emotional needs of our families are very, very important, and I'm again passionate about giving back. So as a psychologist, that's what I like to do, and I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
And congratulations. With that, I'd like to move 3C, please.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. You'll be a great addition to the commission. Congratulations.
Indeed.
Next item, please.
Next item is a consent calendar, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have no cards. Would someone like to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item.
Item five is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments. Ms. Friedman?
No comments.
Mr. Sinanian? Garpetian?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of suggestions, and I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to see if I can get a second on. The mobility study is coming back in September, and there are a few items in there that I would like to talk about it when it comes back. So I want to get a motion for that. And also, there are feasibility studies that was proposed, and with Measure N being around the corner, I think that's what was pulled last week. I'd like to, I'd like us to put a hold on that until the mobility study comes back to the council in September, and we talk about those issues, and then from there on we'll decide.
We're talking about the Wash?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. No, no. On the first item, I'm not sure that we need a motion. It's going to come back as a report, and I think as a matter of course, we're going to discuss it.
Right, right. So when the feasibility study, I mean, when the mobility study comes back in September, I would like to talk about that, where we go Wash project.
Yeah, and I'll second that aspect.
There are so many, and I'd like to mention that I met with the people who initiated this, this study, initiated the Wash project, and they were even surprised that it was coming back this early. So I think there are so many unanswered questions that has to be answered.
But you're saying you don't want, that's a grant-funded study, right? Are we going to lose the grant if we wait until September?
No.
It's, you want to bring back even the initiation of a study that's being funded by a grant to wait until September, because we're not spending money on it, and we won't have anything to discuss until the study's done.
No, we will have many things to discuss. That's how the study has to be done. When you issue an RFP, you need to give them some directions. So we would not lose the grant, right? If he's waiting.
If I can. We are currently working with Metro, and the grant is kind of on hold right now, if that's the best way that I can say it, and continuing to work. There's some new staff at Metro, and so we're working through the funding on that. So we're taking that off.
Okay. So it's being taken off anyway.
For time anyway, until we can sort the grant out with the staff at Metro.
Okay. And also, I would like to mention that grant funding is taxpayers' money as well. It's not just because we are not paying for it. It comes from Measure R or Measure R2. That's our taxes that goes into that pot, and they're distributed accordingly. So that's one thing I wanted to discuss. And the other thing is, with many of these projects that is coming up or is being developed, most of the time, we have a, me personally, I'm speaking on my behalf only, that on a flat rendering, I can't, I can't tell how this project is going to look like in the future. And many times, I heard on this dais and some of the design board members that, I didn't think it's going to look like this. So what I'm asking is maybe for Mr. Lanzafein to look into requiring the developments that are very large to provide a model. They have this, can do a great model for $2,500. So we will see physically how does it look like, the relationship to the next-door neighbors. It would be much easier to understand how the project is going to look like in the future, and I think that's something that, to me, has to be done.
I would support that, a scale model.
I would as well.
With the surrounding buildings.
Yeah. The surrounding buildings could be a box, right, actually? But it would show the relationship between the big projects and.
So you want to make the requirement so it would need to be, so we're agendizing it for a discussion to add it as a requirement? Is that what you're asking for?
And I would assume that we would have a range as it relates to the type of development that's coming forward and costs associated with it.
Right. When it comes back, I would like to, we can discuss it and see. I don't have all the numbers or answers for you. I mean, if it was me, I would do all the projects in downtown specific plans, not go after a five-unit project and ask them. But even if you ask them, they would do it as well. But for these large projects that have a huge impact on the community, I think we need a possible.
Just a clarification for both the motion and the second. Would you like a physical model? We have allowed, in some cases, digital models so that we can see that in a program, fly through in 3D. If you would prefer a physical model, we will make that requirement.
I think we need to have that as part of options, Phil, to bring back to the City Council to have that discussion.
Ask me. Both.
Yeah. Why don't we bring that back to City Council?
And there was a second on that from Ms. Friedman.
Yes.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? I want to take this opportunity to invite Captain Bracken up from our Glendale Police Department. Yesterday, they did a, sorry, grant-funded traffic safety operation, and I felt that the outcomes were interesting, and I'd like for you to share with council and the residents that are listening and watching.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, thank you very much. So with the OTS grant, who has turned out to always be just a fantastic partner with us, who allows us to engage in these types of enforcements. And so these enforcements will focus on either pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, distracted driver, or speed. And so in the first six months of this year, we've issued about 850 citations just through the operations provided through the grant itself. That's not to say that our other enforcement efforts haven't garnered more citations, but it's been very profitable for us, and so we really want to take this time to thank you also for the recognition and support, which means so much to our folks out there on the street who are dealing with this very critical priority of traffic related to the city.
And we know how our residents feel about traffic safety, pedestrian safety. Can you give us some of the results of the operation?
Of the most recent operation? I don't have those specific numbers in front of me. I have the number that I just gave you, but most recently, for, I don't have those exact numbers.
Ones that you did yesterday?
Correct.
I remember.
If you, I have them here.
Oh, do you have them? Because I was going to say the pedestrians.
Twenty-one pedestrians were cited. Does this ring a bell, Captain?
Yes, it does.
Nineteen pedestrians were warned, one bicyclist was cited, four bicyclists were warned, 23 vehicles were cited for not yielding to pedestrians, and one vehicle was cited for not yielding to pedestrians.
And actually, that last one was a warning.
Warning.
It wasn't a citation. It was a warning, which goes to show you, we're not out there just to issue citations. It's all about education, and that's a component of it as we issue warnings as well.
And how many pedestrians, again, were cited?
Twenty-one pedestrians.
And how long of the operation was this?
I believe that was a four-hour.
Four hours. Twenty-four pedestrians cited for crossing in the middle of the block, or what were their violations?
It would have been a myriad of violations associated with any of the pedestrian-related citations that we have, or violations that we have in the vehicle code. So it could be crossing mid-block. It could be crossing against the flashing red hand. It could be just stepping out in front of a vehicle. And then also for those who are driving, similar violations of those crossing across the crosswalk and not waiting for them to reach the opposite side and crossing in front of them.
Thank you very much. I just, I thank you for these operations and for, I know that the pedestrians and the motorists that you cited will be very careful in the future, as well as those that you gave warnings to, I would suppose.
We hope so.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Captain. I have two cards for community comments. Robert Gordon and Laura Mar, is it, I'm sorry.
Martinolich.
Martinolich. Martinolich.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and City Councilmembers. My name is Robert Gordon, a member of Friends of the Glendale Public Library and Board of Directors nominee as Vice President and Community Events Coordinator. As you know, Friends is a vital part of the Glendale Public Library, which supports and promotes high-quality community programs and services with funds raised from book sales, memberships, donations, and events. If you're not currently a member, we would strongly encourage you to join Friends to assist us with this important work. I would also like to announce that Friends is holding its annual membership meeting and elections on May 25 at 6:30, just ahead of the One Book, One Glendale Author Presentation at 7:00 at the Adult Recreation Center. And I believe all of you have been formally invited, and you are certainly encouraged to attend your schedule permitting. We'd love to see you there at our organizational meeting. Now to tell you more about our One Book, One Glendale event, it is my pleasure to introduce Laura Martinolich, Adult Services, Library, Arts, and Culture.
Hi. Good evening. Last year, I was taking you to the dogs with The Art of Racing in the Rain, and this year, I've got another event to tell you about. Each year, the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Department hosts One Book, One Glendale, a public event which encourages everyone to read one chosen book, then meet together as a community to talk about that book with its author. 2016 marks the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Department's ninth annual One Book, One Glendale Community Reading Event. This year, our one book is a work of historical fiction, The Age of Dreaming, by L.A.-based novelist Nina Revore. I am here today to encourage viewers to read The Age of Dreaming and to participate in our One Book, One Glendale Community Reading Event. The Age of Dreaming opens in 1961, and long-retired former silent film star June Nakayama is living in obscurity in the Hollywood Hills. Out of the blue, June receives a phone call from a local screenwriter doing research on early Hollywood silent film stars. June's prominence as an actor from this era makes him someone with whom the author really wants to connect. Author Revore takes the reader back in time to spin a tale of a bygone era where film, scandal, and murder intersect. The Age of Dreaming is the story of a man at odds with himself, a man hoping to atone for the mistakes of his youth and to make peace with his past. I encourage you to read The Age of Dreaming and to join us at the Adult Recreation Center on Wednesday, May 25, first for the Friends annual meeting, and then at 7:00 to meet Nina Revore as she weaves a tale of old Hollywood. Copies of The Age of Dreaming may be borrowed from all Glendale Public Library sites, and we also have eBooks available. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Belinda Beezmeier.
Good evening, members of the City Council, Mayor Devine. My name's Belinda Beezmeier, 40-year Glendale resident, and I represent the Glendale Youth Orchestra. And so this is my last presentation for the year until, well, for the season anyway, until November, when we have our first concert at that time. But I just want you all to know that this is.
It's coming up.
It's not there. There. Okay. The 27th year of the Glendale Youth Orchestra, and this is our third and final concert for the season. And so it's this Sunday, the 22nd of May, at 7:00 at the Alex Theater. And we are presenting members of the Alex, and so we also work in affiliation with the L.A. Philharmonic, which is really fantastic. And so we can be contacted or seen and heard on social media. That's, what is it, Twitter, Facebook, glendaleyouthorchestra.com, and so to get more information and to be able to hear how marvelous these kids really are. And so I just wanted you to know that tickets can be purchased online or at the box office. And if you use the promo code GYO1516, you can buy tickets for $8 instead of the $12 or $10 that, you know, it's offered. And then I just have to remind people that validated parking is at the Orange Street Garage for $1. And it's like, where in Glendale can you park for $1? Not really anyplace. And so I just encourage you and your family and others that you know to come to our concert. We have 70 young musicians who are fantastic. This is one of the best orchestras in the surrounding city. And so, as I said, please come and hear us. And, well, we accept donations too. Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda. I want to thank you for your commitment and your dedication to this orchestra. It's very, it's really great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Hope a lot of people will be there. Next item.
Next item on the agenda, and that was the community event announcement portion, is, the next item is action items. 8A is Director of Public Works regarding SR 134 Glendale Avenue Interchange Modifications and Monterey Road Improvements. Oh, there was a three-minute card submitted. I apologize.
It was Ms. Beezmeier, but I think she's already.
Okay. Yes. All right. Thank you. There is another item? Okay.
Oh, did you want us, come on.
Yes, please.
Very quickly.
I didn't realize. Little note, but as a 40-year Glendale resident, my complaint is about the tennis courts at Glendale High School, and I've come before the council maybe about five times in the past when they were tearing down the courts at Central Park. But they were supposed to get something done at Glendale High School, and it's never happened. And I was just complaining—my youngest daughter graduated in 2004, and so I was complaining about the sunshade screens that are on the courts, that they're torn, and it makes the city look bad, it makes the high school look bad, and I was just wondering if there was any way the city could do something, even with our short funds, about repairing those sunshades. That's it, thank you.
Parks—
That could be part of our joint venture project.
Or is that part of the Glendale Unified School District responsibility?
Yes, it is, but we can—we can also have a conversation and look into it.
Thank you. All righty. So the next item is action items?
Next item is under action items. A.A. is a Director of Public Works regarding SR-134 Glendale Avenue interchange modification and Monterey Road improvements project. A.A. one is a motion awarding a construction contract to E.C. Construction Company an amount of $1,620,950, authorizing City Manager to execute the contract, approving a 10% reserve for contingency in an amount of $162,090.05, and rejecting all other bids. A.A. two is a resolution of appropriation for appropriate funds in an amount of $185,471.40 from Measure R sub-regional funds, account number 250-255-34301, to the SR-134 Glendale Avenue interchange modification and Monterey Road improvements project, account number
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, as the city clerk indicated, this item is regarding the SR-134 Glendale Avenue interchange modification project. This item before you basically is a pavement rehab and traffic flow improvement project. The scope of work has a myriad of items to include removal and construction and griding of deteriorated pavement and replacement of asphalt, selective removal and repair of sidewalks, traffic signal modification at Glendale Avenue and Monterey. Those are the type of items that our Public Works Director and his staff will be—we'll be doing. If you'd like a short presentation on this item, Mr. Galanian is ready to do so.
Okay, council. I don't—I don't know that we need that. Do we have a motion?
Move second.
Discussion, yeah. Roll call, please.
It was moved by Councilmember Friedman and seconded by Najarian.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmembers Friedman—
Yes.
Garpetian—
Yes.
Najarian—
Yes.
Anian—
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes, next item, please.
Although I didn't mind having a presentation—
Excuse me?
Although I didn't have—I didn't—I didn't mind having a presentation, so—
Next item?
Next item is oral communications.
Okay, I have—
Five-minute portion, discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda. Speaker has allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. I have three cards. Tony Passarella first, and Robert Buniatian second.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, and viewing public, my name is Tony Passarella. I'm a 29-year resident of the city of Glendale. So I was at the Earth Day at Central Park, it was a couple, two, three weeks ago on a Saturday, talking to Firemen Vaca and Guerrero. We had a very interesting, long conversation, and what prompted me to go over and talk to him is the fact that I work in and around the hills in Glendale, up Royal, up all Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks, right? For 29 years, I've been hearing sirens. I mean, way up at the top, you can hear them, down in the city. I mean, like, all day, every day. It's like, man, what—you know, what's going on? There's no—I don't see any smoke, and—so fire engines, fire engines everywhere. So that's what prompted me to go speak to the firemen. So Fireman Vaca goes on to tell me that—and you guys know that 80% of the medical calls, the 911 calls are for medical, right? So he tells me that—I introduced myself, he says, "Tony, you know, sometimes we go out to the same place multiple times the same day," and I'm quoting Fireman Vaca. I said, "Well, that kind of took me back." I said, "Whoa, that's—that's not right." He says, "Yeah," he says, "you know, one time I can remember, we went on the call, and the gentleman said, 'I think I had too much to drink.'" I said, "What?" And then he says, "Yeah, we go once a week to the same place." I said, "Something—something's broken here, something is very, very wrong here." So I've been sitting on that, meditating on it, and so I did some research, because it didn't make sense to me. So I went on the annual report 2002, 2011, 2012, and found out there was 13,600 total 911 medical calls, right? And I found out there's a 30-year graph from 1983 showing fire calls absolutely flat, but the medical calls—and then we'll skip forward even to year 2000, go like at a 45-degree angle, up and up and up and up and up. So I said, "Wow." So I kept searching. 8,877 medical transports out of—out of 13,000 calls, 2,000 more than the city of Burbank. Of course, I doubled Burbank, because they're half the population. So I thought, "That's—that's strange." So roughly 85% were transported to two hospitals. 85% of the of the people were transported. And so these calls are bee stings, scrapes, and they're transported? I got this right from Vaca, right? And this would really, really alarm me and tell me something is very wrong, very wrong. The hot—the average hospital stay for these people, these two hospitals, was 18 minutes, under 18 minutes. So basically, the fire department, rolling an ambulance and a ladder or whatever, is babysitting these people that should not even be calling the 911 in the first place. So no common sense, no—no knowledge of how the system should work, and so it's an abuse, a total abuse of the system, and if there's nothing in place to find these people or something, something needs to be done. But I don't know that you people want to change it, because here's the revenue from—from all of this. Say we get—it's—it's 1,500 to 1,700 for basic life support, and the medication is the difference here. And for an advanced life support is two grand, and bill Medicare, insurance—if you don't have any insurance, whatever—the people get billed, right? So let's just say $1,000. Let's just cut it in half, because probably some they don't collect, and some they get 2,000. So that's $1,000, let's say, so that's $8,877,000 in revenue. So that's what I think it's all about. I think it's about the money. I don't think you want it fixed, it's a broken system, and I think the revenue is what you're after. Thank you.
Is that actually what the—with the fire department, get $1,000 per pickup like that?
I'm not sure. Madam Mayor, as it relates to the costs associated with—with each of the calls that go out in terms of the fire department, I will tell you, however, that our fire chief has been looking at our hierarchy of dispatching services into our 911 system, and the ability to be able to dispatch appropriately for the calls that are coming in, so that you're not going out to duplicate types of calls on a given week if you're able to decipher what is happening on the other side of—the phone. And so Chief Fish, along with some other fire chiefs in the region, are looking at this very issue, and I'm sure we'll have something very soon as it relates to that hierarchy, again, of dispatch and the types of folks that we send out to each of those calls.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Robert Buniatian and Mike Mulhill.
It always makes for an amusing show of impotence when a politician blames a capitalist pig for being unconscionable in charging what seems to be an arm and a leg for a product to the poor, incapable, suffering population. Interestingly enough, it was either councilman Garpetian or Sinanian on an Armenian TV show that went after the landlords for being soulless for raising the rents. This simple example shows that either the council member is completely ignorant of basic principles of economics and the pricing mechanism, or are just being conniving politicians to enhance their political ambitions. I'm not sure which one is worse. The reason for the rents going up and housing prices—pricing being expensive included a combination of factors that include the following: Federal Reserve having an interest rate artificially low to induce home buying, the federal government encouraging individuals to spend instead of saving and investing, and in large part, the restrictions put in by the state and local governments in restricting the supply of housing to meet the demand of housing. The fact that prices are going higher means the demand is outstripping the supply. To deny this simple fact of the law of supply and demand is to be ignorant of the principles of economics. In the case of Glendale, the council members have consistently chosen to restrict the supply by the following methods: zoning laws, inclusionary laws, height restriction laws, open space laws, affordable housing laws, historical district laws, permit fees and approval times, and so on and so forth. What I can hear the council members saying is that, "What are you talking about? Can't you see all the developments around you?" Well, yes, but the developments are concentrated in downtown Glendale and are mostly luxury apartments that most living in Glendale can't afford anyways. There is not too much development going on outside of downtown Glendale. The unintended consequences of this type of social engineering is that what all the surrounding developments has done is to help to raise the prices of all apartment rents because of effects of comparables. Another example of restriction of supply is the proposed housing for struggling artists. Why artists? I don't know. Why not teachers, nurses, scientists, or other groups? Struggling artists are struggling for a reason. It is because society, at that particular time and place, values all other alternatives for their limited funds more than what the struggling artist has to offer. Struggling artists do not need special treatment. If you don't want to be a struggling artist, then pick a profession that is more marketable, but don't look to the government for sustaining your shortcomings in your own career. Again, how about other groups? As a rough approximation, Glendale has about 77,000 units of housing, of which about 47,000 are multifamily and 30,000 are single-family. Glendale also has about 1,300 affordable housing units, which means of the affordable housing—which means affordable housing is about 3% of the multifamily and majority of the rental housing supply. Glendale also has a low vacancy rate of about 2% or about 1,000 units, let us say. So what would happen if 1,300 units were out in the open for competition for renters? This is a classic case of restricting supply. What about the people that need affordable housing? Well, for those, how about the novel idea of moving to a location where housing is affordable? Moving is a difficult proposition, but a necessary one for a functional housing market. Unfortunately, the voters in Glendale in general are ignorant of the basic economics of laws. In more ways than one, the council members are a reflection of this fact. The citizens of Glendale have no room to complain about high rents, because they're voting council members that are also ignorant in the basic laws of economics. To the council members, capital pigs are not the boogeyman. You see the boogeyman every time you look yourself in the mirror. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulhill? Or did you want to—
No, I must leave.
Well, I just want to thank you for coming and voicing your opinion here today—tonight, because everything you said is everything at this—I've been saying from this dais, the amount of development, the luxury housing is going to affect the rest of the unit—the rents for the rest of the units, the lack of affordable housing for seniors and young families, the artist colony—I don't know if you follow this, our council meetings or not, but that's what we've been fighting for, and that's what, you know, we mentioned. We went back and forth a few times exactly why—why artists, why this, why that. So basically, you're preaching to the choir at this—as far as I'm going. I can't speak on behalf of my fellow council members, but thank you for coming tonight, because everything you said, I agree with.
So let me—let me clarify. You agree with him that—that—because it wasn't me who said that these—these landlords are heartless, soulless, I'm guessing it was you. I mean, the gentleman can't differentiate between Garpetian and Sinanian, that's another story, but it wasn't me, so it must have been you. So I'm assuming you also agree with his statement that those who can't afford, get—the hell out of Glendale, leave Glendale, because that's what he said.
No, what he said was, "We are saying, if you can't afford it, move somewhere else." That's what he was referring to, that's—that's not what we said, that's what—
But that's what he said.
No, he says that we are saying to—to move out of Glendale. That's not what we're saying, we're trying to—
No, no, that's what he's saying. I don't think that's what he said. He's saying that the basic—we're ignorant, we don't understand economics.
That's—that's fine, that's—that's an opinion, but what I'm saying is, most of the things he said about the rents and the situation that exists in Glendale—it—it does exist, and it was me that said some—some—some landlords are really heartless to—to increase—and I said it from this dais, too, that you have to have a little heart not to increase the rent by five—I brought this today, $520 once. So I think your—your point is well-taken, but we are working on it. It's not—it's not just a slogan or what have you, we’re fighting for it every day, and if you want to see what we've done up here, maybe you start—you should start watching some of our council member meetings, especially the housing authority. So it's up there, but it's okay. Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it.
We can have a conversation with—
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, Mike Mulhill?
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mulhill. Fear and scare tactics to hide greed. The only reason that Measure N is on the ballot is because this council and previous councils have approved and given outrageous salaries and outrageous retirement pension benefits year after year after year to our Calbridge Union workforce. The repeal of the utilities users tax is a referendum on our city government. It is David versus Goliath. Little David is a band of citizen soldiers using email, social media, walking neighborhoods, handing out literature, putting out yard signs, and asking the public for campaign donations, taking on Goliath, the largest city elite establishment, and how the elite establishment is using fear and scare tactics to hide greed. Albert Einstein said, "There are three forces that rule the world: stupidity, fear, and greed." Stupidity. The elite establishment fools the public by using reported at least $50,000 of your tax dollars to reach 200,000 residents in a repeated, one-sided mailer, slanted opinion, mailers inserted in the GWP, bills, newspapers, and using our innocent schoolkids to take home a disguised information mailer on Measure N. But really, it is an implied no-on-Measure-N insert in their weekly packet. This reminds me of how the Mexican cartel uses women and children to smuggle drugs into our country. The bigger the lie, the more people believe it. Fear. They say cutting taxes will drastically reduce our services—city services. Greed. The truth is, the elite establishment loves your money. In 2014, 756 city employees earned annually between $100 to over $300,000 in salary with outrageous retirement pension for life at age 50 or 55. Who among us, non-government employees, workers, have these benefits? Why in 2014 was the median pay and benefit income of a Glendale city employee 83% higher than a full-time-employed Glendale resident? The Stanford Institute for Economic Policy Research estimate Glendale pension debt is at $1.4 billion and still growing. To balance the budget, this council and previous councils have floated bonds for over $1 billion. That is borrowed money, folks, for your kids and mine to pay for the greed of our elite establishment. To balance the budget, this council and previous councils have increased your water and your electric rates every year, year after year after year. Then they transfer your money to the general fund to pay for those outrageous salaries and pension benefits of our Calbridge Union workforce. The greed of our elite establishment. To balance the budget, this council and previous councils have increased or created new fees and taxes for you to pay for the greed of our elite establishment. A couple years ago, your elected official created a new fee for kids who want to use the Verdugo Skate Park. Shame on that council. In 2016, City Manager Scott Ochoa salaried benefits $354,000. Assistant City Manager Jasmine Beers. In 2015, salaried benefits $251,000, had a job classification change from 8 to 12, and given additional $4,000 per month raise for doing— 12, and given additional $4,000 per month raise for doing exactly the same job, bringing her annual salary and benefits to $299,000. To put this in perspective, this crisis, this crisis, the governor of California's salary and benefits are only $212,640. We do not have a revenue problem, folks, in viewing us. We have a spending problem that this council refuses to acknowledge, and I will come here week after week, month after month. The crisis is the salaries and the pensions of our union workforce, and Measure N is the beginning of the downfall. Please vote yes on Measure N. Thank you.
Comments? To Mulhill? Next item?
Next item, and since there is no new business, would just be simply a motion to adjourn.
Glad motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned.